Councilmember Jovin.
President.
Councilmember Clumstein.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen Peñalosa.
Here.
Mayor Protem Tran.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here.
All right, may I ask Assistant City Manager Matt West to do the invocation, followed by Mayor Protem Cindy Tran to do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Lord, as we gather this evening to address the important matters before us, may we do so with a spirit of unity, collaboration, and purpose. We are entrusted with the responsibility to shape the city's future, and in this moment, we seek wisdom, clarity, and discernment. Guide our discussions with a recognition that every decision made holds the power to transform lives, foster growth, and create lasting opportunities for all in the community. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Put your hand over your chest, face it flat, and repeat after me.
All right, and with that, we will adjourn over to the Housing Authority. So I'll hand it over to Chair Kim Nguyen Peñalosa.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call Roll?
Commissioner Beckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Jovin.
President.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Clumstein.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
Commissioner Tran.
Here.
Vice Chair Bridigam.
Here.
And Chair Nguyen Peñalosa.
Here. Do we have anyone wishing to speak for Oral Communications for Housing Authority? Seeing none, I'll close and move on. We have one item under consent. Thank you. Call Roll.
Let me do a roll call vote for this. Commissioner Beckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Jovin.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Clumstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Tran.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bridigam.
Yes.
And Chair Nguyen Peñalosa.
Yes.
Motion received. Nine yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll adjourn the meeting and pass it back on to City Council.
Alrighty. All right, we shall reconvene City Council, and that takes us on to Oral Communications. I do have a handful of cards, so we'll start with Sophia Riley and Caitlin.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers and staff of Garden Grove City. First, we would like to thank our Coach and Mayor Protem Cindy Tran for inviting us to be here tonight. My name is Sophia. I'm an eighth grader at St. Clummin School in Garden Grove and the Team Captain of the SCS Technicals. We are the only first Lego League city team in Garden Grove. First Lego League allows kids from all over the world to meet and compete in Lego Robotics. Our team gets to build and code Lego robots to accomplish various missions. The areas of competition include core values, robot design, robot game, and innovation projects. Each year's competition has a theme, and this year's theme is all about the ocean and focusing on the awareness to protect and preserve our aquatic ecosystem.
My name is Riley. I'm a seventh grader and the Technicals' lead innovation researcher. As described by our Team Captain, submerged is this year's theme, and we were tasked with designing an innovation project related to exploring the ocean. We decided to improve the ability of researchers to study and address pollution's impact on marine life. Our innovation idea is to generate clean energy from nature's existing resources like wave, wind, and solar energy on a floating buoy. The buoy recharges and uploads data from a robot fish with sensors that collect data of various chemical and biological pollutants for researchers to help them save a specific habitat in the ocean.
My name is Caitlin. I'm a seventh grader and the Technicals' Innovation Project Researcher. Our robot fish is tackling the problem of eutrophication. This happens when an amount of certain nutrients, such as nitrogen and phosphorus, rise, leading to overgrowth of algae and plants. There are many problems with this, namely algae blooms, low-oxygen water can kill the ocean animals, which can lead to many devastating effects on the ocean's ecosystems. This can lead to many effects, such as increased toxins in the water and reduced food supplies for our ever-growing population.
All right, next is Gio, Alice, and Sessa.
My name is Gio. I'm a seventh grader, and this is my first time in Lego engineering. I'm learning to code a robot. I have a lot of fun working with my friends and being on the team. I care deeply about the ocean, and I want to save all marine life. Due to my love of marine life, I learn a lot about the ocean and its ecosystem and know that it can have a huge impact on the climate and human lives if we are not taking care of it. I'm here today to bring awareness about pollution in the ocean and how our team's innovation project can serve as a solution to save marine life.
My name is Alice. I'm a sixth grader, and this is my first time in Lego engineering. I'm also learning how to code robots. I have a lot of fun working with our team. There's a lot of problem-solving in Lego engineering, like when we try to get our robot to do something and it fails. Then, we have to go back and figure out why that run didn't work. Maybe it was the robot, or the attachment, or maybe it was the code. The skills I learned from joining this team will help me to help real-life issues, especially relating to our beloved ocean.
My name is Sessa. I'm an eighth grader, and this is my second year in Lego engineer. I'm a builder, and I assist with the innovation project boards. Learning about how small changes can have a great effect on how a robot works is something that helps me see that one person can make a change to help the ocean, the climate, and our ever-growing problem of pollution.
Abby, Omri, and Ryder.
My name is Abby. I am an eighth grader, and this is my first year in Lego engineering. I am a builder, so I help assist in the team's robot and attachments for a robot. I love art, and I bring the skill and visions in my design and building attachment parts to solve missions for our robot runs. I also added my artistic skill to design our innovation presentation boards, which help raise awareness to save the ocean.
My name is Omri. I'm an eighth grader, and this is also my first year in Lego engineering. I am a builder. I love Lego and building Lego projects. I bring an architectural mindset to help build attachments and various parts of the robot and attachments that solve missions in the robot competition. My favorite attachment that we made is one that opens a well's mouth and feeds it krill. It required some moving parts and a chute so that the krill slides down to enter the well's mouth. I want to use my building skill to build devices to help save the ocean.
My name is Ryder. I'm a seventh grader, and this is my second year with the Technicals. I am one of the colters in the team. I help with various tasks in the team and support the team. With our hope, our innovation can help solve the problem of pollution in the ocean. Thank you for always supporting our team.
Zachary.
Hi, I'm Zachary, and this is also my second year in the Lego Team Technicals. I'm a co-captain as well as a coder. We just went to qualifiers on this Sunday and won first place innovation. And made it to regionals. We are looking forward to representing St. Clummin School and Garden Grove City as we move forward into this year's first Lego season. We are here asking for support from everyone and our most honorable and wonderful City Council. Thank you so much for sharing, thank you so much for having us, let us share our project. Have a great night.
We would like to give this medal to our Coach and Protem Mayor Cindy Tran. Thank you.
So I just want to preface and say, normally in Oral Communications, people are just addressing the council, and it's not a two-way conversation. But that was more of a community spotlight than in oral. So I'd like to give Mayor Protem Cindy Tran a chance to say a few words if she'd like.
That were amazing. Did you know that all the council members up here, including staff, look at you? Listen to every single word you said. That's the first time I've ever seen that. So thank you so much. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you. I'm just honored to be part of this team. I'm not going to take too much of time from our meeting today, but great job, you guys. Thank you.
All right, Devin Marsh.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Staff, for seeing me. Please forgive me, I'm not good at speaking. I came here tonight and presented a packet attached to my P card of what I believe that the city did is violate my civil rights, enforcing their way on my property without a search warrant that was signed by a judge, and continuously harass my family and me with discrimination. When they came on my property, the inspectors for the Building and Safety Code did not know their building and safety. When I questioned them, they pushed me to the side. I told them, you know, there's other violations that are like this throughout the city that aren't being enforced. They told me to file on the city website. I've done that. Nothing has been done. I feel that this isn't right. You know, and I hope that someone here can help me during this matter. I will be appealing all the citations with the Newport Court system. And that's what I have.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Lauren Kupon and John Van Lee.
My name is Lauren Kupon. I manage commercial property at Garden Grove &amp; West. In March of this year, the police were called because there was an individual or individuals at the property removing things from a tenant's space that was vacant. The police were called. It took me approximately 50 minutes to come from Los Angeles down to Garden Grove to meet with the police officers. When I came into the premises, I told them that the individuals there was not supposed to be there and to arrest them. I just said this three times. The police officers disregarded me. I just got a police report in October after seven months. The police detectives' recommendation was for it to go to the District Attorney's Office. The District Attorney's Office said there was no crime committed, although $120,000 at this point and as much as $130,000 worth of damage was done to our premises. The police believed that this gentleman had a right to be there. When asked to provide a lease, he provided a duplicate dummy lease that anybody could have printed up. I'd like to know, bring this to your attention so that you can discuss it at another time. But it was so distressful to my owners that they felt the need to come here and speak for themselves, just to ask why? Why is our city not working for criminals, not for people that purchase these properties rightfully and pay for just about everybody's salaries through their taxes, yet nobody is doing anything to protect us?
Yeah, that's why. We need to protect us because we do work hard. My name is John Van Lee. I am the owner of the Garden Grove Plaza. And even my manager, she's asking many times, but they didn't do anything. Even the guy, when the leasing, they broke it out on the floor. On the top, the ceiling, everything broke it out. The cost fixed about $130,000. But we don't know where we get the money because we work hard, pay taxes, pay everything, but they do anything. So please, please help us.
I mean, if somebody can relook into this case and find out where the disconnect is between the Police Department, I mean, I shouldn't have to ask for desk sergeants on four different occasions to intervene to help me. I mean, it's unbelievable. I know there's a representative from the Police Department. You know, they arrested a Hispanic guy that was in the U-Haul truck, but the individual that was there, that was the head of the whole shenanigans, nothing happened to him. He was given an hour to remove his tools, very peacefully saying by the officers, "Oh, you go ahead and remove your tools," because he kept on saying he's going to have a heart attack because he's lost $80,000. It was later found out that he was a pre-existing tenant that predated Mr. and Mrs. Lee's purchase of the property in the 90s. And this is a repeat thing that he does from city to city. And I only found that out by one of the Vietnamese tenants that we had signed with that we had to give his money back. That it was, he was going to pay $200,000 for a space that he would not have a lease for, and I most certainly wouldn't have allowed him to stay because he didn't follow the right process. And thank you for your time. I hope you'll look into this. I hope all of you will look into this.
Thank you very much.
Protect your citizens. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the pink cards I have. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on an item not listed on the agenda or just in general for oral? Okay, with that, we will close Oral Communications. I'll take a brief pause in case the kids want to clear out so that we're going to head into the business section of our meeting now. So you're all...
I'll do one picture with the mayor. Okay, with the council then.
With the whole council.
Yeah, why don't you guys all...
Well, they represent our city, right? Thank you so much. Ready? You want to put the jacket down?
Sure.
Here, I got you. Right next to me. Look over here, stages. Everybody turn around. Say, "Thank you."
Thank you again.
Hold on, one more picture, one more picture.
One, two. Thank you. Thank you so much, you guys. See you guys on Tuesday. I love you guys. See you on Tuesday.
You too.
Thank you, guys.
Liz, do you know if we have anybody here for the proclamation?
Thank you, Becky. Thank you, Becky, Cindy.
Bye, bye-bye.
No? Okay. Okay, we will reconvene and go on to Written Communications. We do have several items listed, so we'll start with item number one.
Item number one under Written Communications this evening is a consideration of a written request from LFA Group LLC to extend the operating hours and make an exemption to the city's noise ordinance on Tuesday, December 31, 2024, at the Garden Amph. And Deputy Director Janet Pallayo is here to provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of the City Council. Staff received a written request from the production company of the Garden Amph, LFA Group LLC, requesting to extend operating hours on New Year's Eve, December 31, 2024, from 10:00 p.m. to 12:15 a.m. Additionally, this request would also require the approval to make an exemption to the hours listed in the noise ordinance establishing lower noise thresholds after 10:00 p.m. That's municipal code 8.47.070. Since 2017, LFA Group LLC has been the production company of the city's festival amphitheater. The facilities use agreement allows LFA Group LLC to operate and rent the facility until 10:00 p.m. LFA will be hosting a New Year's Eve event and would like to accommodate the traditional midnight countdown as previously done in 2023, and will provide attendees the opportunity to welcome the new year. Approval of this request will not have a financial impact to the city. It is recommended that the City Council consider the written request from LFA Group LLC to extend operating hours and make an exemption to the noise ordinance from 10:00 p.m. to 12:15 a.m. on Tuesday, December 31, 2024, at the Garden Amph. That concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. We also have Viet Tran, who's here representing LFA. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Questions, comments, or a motion?
Happy to move it.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right. Item number two.
Item number two is
Sister City.
Consideration of a written request from the Sister City Association of Garden Grove for cosponsorship of the 2025 Strawberry Stomp 5K. Ms. Pallayo is going to provide the report.
Good evening again, Mayor and Members of the City Council. Staff received a written request from the Sister City Association of Garden Grove for cosponsorship of the 2025 Strawberry Stomp 5K. The event will be held on Saturday, May 24, 2025, on Historic Main Street, prior to the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Parade. In addition to the parade route on Euclid Street and Chapman Avenue, the 5K will require the partial closure of Historic Main Street and Acacia Parkway from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. The association is a local nonprofit organization that is in good standing with the IRS and has been serving the Garden Grove community since 1989. The association is dedicated to furthering the knowledge and understanding between Garden Grove and its sister city, Anyang, South Korea, while providing Garden Grove students the unique opportunity each year to travel abroad. The association also hosts youth from Anyang, South Korea as part of the Student Exchange Program. All proceeds from fundraising event will go directly towards sending Garden Grove students overseas and hosting the incoming exchange students from Anyang, South Korea. The cost to provide police and public work support, including additional street closure hours for this event, has been estimated to be approximately $13,000. This cost is calculated based on the two additional hours that are added to the existing street closure plans for the annual Strawberry Festival Parade. The additional costs will be absorbed within the current departmental budgets. Therefore, no additional appropriation is needed to cosponsor the 2025 Strawberry Stomp 5K. It is recommended that the City Council consider the request from the Sister City Association of Garden Grove for cosponsorship of the 2025 Strawberry Stomp 5K that will be held on Saturday, May 24, 2025. That concludes my staff report. We do also have representatives here from the association available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you again, Janet. Questions, comments, motion?
Move it.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, item number three.
Item number three is a consideration of a written request from honoring our fallen organization to waive the city's Showmobile stage rental fee for the 2024 Jingle Jam event on Friday, December 13, 2024. And Ms. Pallayo will provide that report.
All right, good evening. For the third time, Mayor and Members of the City Council. Staff received a written request on behalf of honoring our fallen for the City Council to consider waiving the rental fee for use of the city's Showmobile stage for the annual Jingle Jam event scheduled on Friday, December 13, 2024, at East Gate Park. For the 2024 Jingle Jam event, honoring our fallen will be the sponsoring nonprofit organization. The community event is a free and festive night of holiday activities that include photos with Santa, train rides, stage performances from local groups and students, a vendor village, and craft activities. Honoring our fallen is a 501(c)(3) organization that is in good standing with the IRS. Approval of this request will forego the revenue that would otherwise be collected for the rental of the city's Showmobile stage in the amount of $350. It is recommended that the City Council consider the written request from honoring our fallen to waive the rental fee of $350 for use of the Showmobile stage for this year's Jingle Jam event that is scheduled on Friday, December 13, 2024, at East Gate Park. That concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. George?
Yeah, I just want to give a shout-out. It is just beyond belief. The mission of honoring our fallen, it's one of the top nonprofits in America. Their mission is, I don't know how they do it, traveling all over the world, transporting the remains of our fallen soldiers, navigating their grieving families through the burial process and all the benefits and the mounds of paperwork involved and everything. They're really a top-notch nonprofit worldwide. And to have them based in our city and in my district, it's really kind of a special thing. And then the Jingle Jam event, you know, it's an awesome event every year, and these two kind of found each other. And so, you know, with that being said, I'd like to make the motion.
Call the vote. Oh, did you want to speak? Okay, call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, we will recess over to the successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call Roll?
Member Bridigam.
Here.
Member Tran.
Here.
Member Jovin.
President.
Member Clumstein.
Here.
Member Nguyen Peñalosa.
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neil. And Chair Jones.
Here.
Okay, we already did Oral Communications Consent Calendar. It's just receive and follow the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Any matters? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to City Council. We'll reconvene City Council. It takes us on to Consent Calendar. It's recommended that items four through nineteen be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull any items.
Mayor, I'd like to pull six and sixteen?
Yeah, I'd like to pull sixteen.
Okay, motion for the balance?
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, item six pulled by George.
Item six is adoption of the relocation plan for the single-family household residing at 12371 Harbor Boulevard in Garden Grove, California 92840. And Ms. Monica Covatubias is here to provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. The item you have before you is a relocation plan
a relocation plan for the single-family residence at 12371 Harbor Boulevard. The city acquired this property in July 2013 to construct a new fire station. At that time, the property was leased to a low-income household, and the city honored their original lease terms and rent. Due to the property's current deteriorating condition, the household needs to be permanently relocated, and the existing home will be demolished. The California Relocation Assistance Law Government Code Section 7260 and its Regulations Title 25 California Code of Regulations Section 6000 govern relocation assistance and determine the benefits tenants are entitled to. These laws also mandate that a relocation plan be prepared, made public, enacted upon by the legislative body whenever displacement occurs. On May 28th, 2014, the city contracted Overland Pacific and Kidler, a division of Trans Systems, to prepare a relocation plan and provide assistance to the affected household according to state regulations. The relocation plan was created based on interviews with the impacted household using a survey to gather information on their needs and preferences. A draft plan was made available for a 30-day public review period starting on September 30th, 2024, allowing the household to provide feedback and ensuring their input was considered. The plan also ensures that the household will receive at least a 90-day written notice before they are required to move following City Council approval of the relocation plan. During this period, the displaced household will receive relocation assistance and benefits as required by the relocation law. These benefits include comprehensive relocation advisory assistance, clear communication about relocation policies and procedures, fair relocation payments, access to the city's relocation assistance program, and timely relocation to comparable replacement housing. Benefits include payment for moving expenses and rental assistance over a 42-month period and limited to a maximum of $5,250 per month as stated under state guidelines. Actual relocation benefits will be determined based on household size, gross annual income, and the difference between the rent they must pay for a comparable replacement unit over a 42-month period. The estimated relocation cost for this household is $131,000. This cost will not be covered, will be covered by the department's existing budget with no immediate need for additional funds. Staff recommends the City Council adopt the relocation plan. We thank you for your time and consideration and are prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Monica.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, I pulled this. I think when you see that number, $131,000 to relocate two people. You know, on its face, it just seemed very, very excessive. I did a little quick internet searching to see what a, you know, a moving company would charge to move a household and, you know, depending on how far and everything, it was between $3,000 and $6,000. And I'm like, $131,000 seems very, very excessive. So I voiced my concerns with staff, and I guess under the state law, they have this plan based on how long the tenants resided in the location, and this is what it comes to, $131,000. So, you know, it seems ludicrous on its face, and it is ludicrous on its face, but it's the law. And, you know, if we don't comply, then we end up putting ourselves in a position where we end up losing much more in legal costs and everything else. But I just want the residents of Garden Grove to know that we understand this is ludicrous. This is crazy. This is beyond belief, $131,000 to move two people. So, but with that being said, we're actually saving money. So I just wanted to bring that forward to highlight this particular thing so I don't hear about it in the next two weeks from people going, "What the heck are you doing?" All right, so there's a reason we were doing this and we're complying with state law, and unfortunately, it's actually saving us in the long run. So.
Is that a motion?
I'll move it.
Just, yeah, just a quick note. Thank you for pulling it. And thanks to the staff. I actually have, you know, we have the review with staff earlier, and I look into the number $3,000 something dollar per month, and the staff were able to explain, you know, the calculation. So yes, the number 100 something thousand, that's a lot, but then Council George already mentioned, you know, the calculation and why we have to pay, and that's just the number that we have to do. So thanks to staff for providing a detailed report. That's it.
Since this is a legal matter, I'd like to have a couple of questions for our attorney. Normally, we do this in closed session, don't we?
No, the relocation plan has to be approved in open session.
Why?
Because it's state law.
Can you tell me which law we are going on for points in authority?
Sure, it's, it was included in the staff report, and it's Government Code Section 7260 and following, and that's the beginning of the section that deals with relocation assistance. And then the state has adopted regulations in the HCD, and that's found in Title 25 of the California Code of Regulation, starting at Section 6000. And it has to do with if you're going to take public property and there are residential uses, and you're going to displace the residents for your activity, then you're required to pay relocation assistance. So we could have, we could have taken the property, tore the, tore the house down 20 years ago when we purchased the property, but at the time, we were adding properties to build up. This property is not enough for one fire station, and so we needed to acquire adjacent properties. And the City Council's policy then and today is not to use eminent domain to acquire property and force, you know, take, take property. So we had to wait time for the adjacent properties to go on the market and purchase, you know, in the open market rather than taking by eminent domain. In the meantime, we allowed the residents that were tenants at the time to remain on the property. At this point, we didn't get enough properties to build a proper fire station. Instead, we built Fire Station 6 on the park site with existing property we already owned. And now these properties became surplus. And again, because we didn't have a need for the property right away, we allowed the tenants to continue to occupy. It is now time, we would spend more than $130,000 to fix the property to bring it up to a habitable condition. And at this point, due to health and safety concerns, we, we need to have them relocate. And rather than the spend thousands of dollars fixing a home that we may not need in the future, it is better to relocate them and basically clear the land.
Okay, so once we allocate this, what's the timeline to move them out, and what are we going to do with the property itself?
Yeah. So we have to give 90 days' notice, and again, that's a state law for publicly-owned property, tenancies for private at 60 days, I believe. So 90 days' notice, at which time during that 90 days, we'll be providing the relocation assistance. I mean, this is, this is only to provide the programming for relocating. And then in that 90-day period, our consultants will identify properties where they could move and assist them in identifying the properties, finding the properties, and then also allowing them to move during that time.
What are we doing with a property that we're going to repossess, I assume?
Well, we already own the property, right?
Correct. We own the property. It was originally acquired for a fire station, which we no longer need. We actually did acquire a couple other properties, but they're not all adjacent. There are some privately-owned properties still intermingled, and so we'll have some conversations about whether we want to just surplus these off individually. We'd have to follow the Surplus Lands Act, or whether any of the properties are worth acquiring voluntarily and assembling some land for a future project. So those are some discussions that will occur once this property is vacated.
So we, we have some options, and that part may come back to the council.
Absolutely.
But this is not coming back to the council. Once we vote today, it's dispositive, and then the consultants will work to move them out. The property remains. I heard that we don't want to spend more money renovating it, so I'm hearing that it might be demolished eventually.
Will be demolished.
We will demolish it right away to ensure it's not a hazard for...
Okay. And then if and when we decide to acquire more voluntarily, we're not going to trigger more eminent domain.
Correct. And we would come to the council before making those types of decisions.
Right, because that's what I'm trying to avoid. This is a kind of one-time thing that's worked itself since 2013, so we've had some time, some history on this. I don't recall it going to the council for the first or second reading, but that's probably me. The main point is that we don't want to make this a regular thing or have others come in front of the council to have to relocate them at a rather expensive price. And I don't have to go into detail, but Councilman Bridgum already spoke to that. I just want to make sure that the property, after they're vacated, that we repossess it, and that the disposition is to be demolished and keeping it an option that it can go into our surplus and/or options to acquire more property, which the city might want to develop something else, if not a fire station, that's reserved for another time if we go that next step. But I, I want to refresh that and have it on the record so people know that these properties will be properly managed and maintained. And this is a one-time thing. Yeah, we may have to do it again, but eminent domain, there's no fun to it. So I, that's one of the few, few rare things I want us to have to pay for.
Item, I'd like to clarify, part of the $131,000 is to subsidize the differential in the rent that it's now going to, we were, we never raised the rent. It was like $1,100 a month for this house. So obviously, where they're going to go is going to cost more. So this is going to subsidize it from what I heard, 42 months, right? By law, we're required to help subsidize it. That's what that's doing. So.
That's what that is.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure the public out there knew what was going on. Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, motion by George, and I seconded. We'll call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, item 16 per Councilmember John O'Neill.
Thank you.
Item 16 this evening is review of the automatic pass-through water rate adjustment, and Director Patricia Song is here to provide the report.
Madam Clerk, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. So this item is a request for your review of pass-through adjustments on the city's water rate, which will take effect on January 1st, 2025. The city's current rates were established in December 2023 through an ordinance number 2948, which was, which also authorized automatic pass-through adjustments to accommodate changes in wholesale water purchase costs. The city supplies water to customers from two sources, the groundwater we produce and the imported water from wholesale suppliers. When setting our five-year water rates, the forecasted costs associated with groundwater production, well, we forecast the costs associated with groundwater production. However, the changes in wholesale costs were not predictable at the time. And additionally, our groundwater production is subject to a so-called replenishment assessment set by the Orange County Water District, or OCWD, which varies annually based on OCWD's budget. As a result, our rate structure establishes only a baseline water delivery charge with annual adjustments to account for changes in both OCWD assessments and wholesale water costs. Now, just to give you a breakdown of the changes to this year's water raise, which is an adjustment of 20 cents per 100 cubic feet, it's the primarily three factors drives that change. The first one is the OCWD replenishment assessment increase based on the consultant calculation and the staff estimate of the water production. This is the groundwater production that we provide. That cost, it's about $688 per acre feet. So the calculation of the impact, it's, it's calculated at $64 per acre, acre feet. The second component of the rate change, it's the adjustment from the Metropolitan Water District of Orange County. In April, Metropolitan revised four rate components, the Tier One water rate charge, the readiness-to-serve charge, the capacity charge, and also the connection charge. These changes affect the cost of our imported water, which accounts for about 15% of our total water supply, and the impact is calculated for, at about $186 per acre feet. Now, the last but not least is the Municipal Water District of Orange County's Choice Program. This program cost increased from $9.69 per acre feet to $13.87 per acre feet, which directly impacts the cost of imported water supply as well. So based on staff and consultants' calculation, on the latest information from the wholesale water providers and OCWD, along with the updated consumption estimates to determine the adjustments, we have detailed the calculation in attachment to, to the staff report. And it's, well, we also had a calculation about the impact on average residential customer use for about 22 units of water, and the impact on the customers' bi-monthly statement's going to be about $7.26. Of course, actual changes will be dependent upon the actual use of the water. So I hope I have clarified the calculation of the pass-through adjustments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Patricia. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Patricia. Thank you very much. I thought this was important to pull from consent only because it is a major item for 34,000 water payers here in Garden Grove. I was a little taken aback when I saw it, because I'm the first one to vote for an increase to cover charges. I don't want to be subsidizing anything, but this hit me pretty strong because even though it sounds small, 20 cents, you know, 2021, it went up a nickel for both tiers. We're Tier One, Tier Two. If you're a low-water user, you might, you might have all your tiers in Tier One, but for most people like me, I go into Tier Two. I have a large property. I try not to water too much and just keep it down as much as I can. I don't water that much, actually. But my bill's a few hundred dollars every billing cycle. So 20 cents per tier, or per cubic hundred feet, giving example, 2021, it was a nickel for both tiers. 2022, we raised it, and this, this council raised it a nickel on the first tier, and then we were kind of, in my, in my opinion, we were penalizing Tier Two users at that time in 2022 because the second tier went to 20 cents increase. 2023, we did a 10 cent for both tiers, so kind of evened it out. 2024, we, we passed the resolution for the five-year plan and all that, and at the time, it sounded great. Hey, yeah, we'll just pass through the cost of this nickel increase in charges. Well, now it's come back, and it's 20 cents per tier. And I, I'm not going to argue too much the fact, but I think the calculations could be skewed. I'm not going to vote in favor of this tonight. That's one ring, one reason I want to bring it forward. If it was maybe 10 cents per tier, I'd probably vote for it. But I, I think we need to take another look at this because I think people's bills are going to go up more than $7 a pay period. I think it's going to be more like $10 or $20. And I think 34,000 of our rate payers out there are going to be upset that we didn't, if we just passed this under consent, that it wouldn't be an item. So I don't think there's anything really to argue. I don't know if my colleagues want to say anything, but yeah, so I'm not in favor. I won't be voting in favor of the 20 cents per tier. If we discuss it, maybe come up with something else. I'm open to that. That's all I got right now.
George?
So last year, we literally put through, what I understand was probably the largest water rate increase in our city's history. Five-year plan, and quite frankly, it was way above what even our experts said we needed to maintain the water. And I voted no on that because of that. It was so much more than we needed. And now, less than a year later, we're being struck with this. I think it's ridiculous. I won't support it. You know, we just hit the taxpayers with this huge rate tax hike on their water. And now we're saying you got to do it again. And honestly, when we hit them the first time, it was more than our experts said we needed. It was, our experts literally came here and said, "This is very conservative. You don't need this much." All right, but we still, as a body, passed it. And now, we're being hit with this. And now we're being hit with this. So I, I agree with John. I'm not going to support this. I think, I think it's a little ridiculous. I think maybe, and I'm not disparaging you at all because I know you do a great job crunching these numbers, but I think there's some wiggle room in this. And I don't think this needs to be so high.
I agree with both of the council members that spoke. I don't like to vote for something that we have to ask the resident to pay more. And last time when we did the water, I was, I feel hurt, but I mean, I vote because we need that to maintain our infrastructure. And then this time, listening to the two council members thinking about, is there any way, like check the number again? Is there any way that we could change? I have no idea. When we went through this at the review, I was told this pass-through mean, you know, that's whatever the cost, not the cost that we have to pay. But if there is an opportunity that we could review and maybe make some difference here so that way our resident know, even if we come back and the number is going to be this, then at least we, we know the concern and we, we spend the actual effort to do something about it.
Anybody? Joe? Joe?
Just a quick question, then I'll make a couple of comments myself. Our consultant's not here tonight, so we couldn't ask him any questions. Is he still on board?
The consultant is not here tonight, but we have checked numbers with him. It's a collaboration between our estimates of consumption as well as his information on the other agency's rate adjustments, which we have no control over.
I'm going to vote this up, but in case it fails, it's probably should come back with the consultant here. And I'm hearing that my colleagues are not comfortable with voting it up. I know we're going to take some heat for it. I've already heard complaints from our previous rate votes, but it seems to me it's necessary. Of course, it's not something we want to do. It's kind of a last resort, but I'll vote it up, knowing that I might be in the minority this time, and we may have to bring it back another, for another vote later.
Thank you. I would like to make the motion to table this to the next meeting to have a breakdown of what the projections are. One thing for sure, in the city, we're not in the business of making money, but when it comes to water, we are in the business of selling that water, and we don't want to absorb the costs and have that become a deficit on those, on the general fund. We are not going to be paying and subsidizing water that our residents should be paying for. I don't want to have to pay more for my water, but if I were buying it directly through whoever I was buying it through, I would have to pay that much. I don't like when we come to this meeting and we start making the boogeyman seem really scary and like we're doing something wrong because I know we're not. And I know our staff wouldn't put something on the agenda to indicate that. I have no recollection of our consultants previously saying that our numbers were extremely conservative and that we shouldn't or should do it. So I just want to provide that clarification. And I also saw the city attorney's face grit, like, look at, like confused. So that makes me more alarmed, if anything. So if we could just table this to the next meeting to ensure that we can gather some more information and make sure that the other council members feel comfortable. None of us want to pass through rates, but if that's what we have to pay, that's what the consumer has to pay. As I mentioned, the city is not in the business of making money. We pay, we charge what we have to pay, but when it comes to water, we, we have to make money back on that.
Yeah, and, and actually, I think Councilwoman Kim Wynn-Penalosa, I hope I can, I think I'm finally being able to get that to come off my tongue. I think her idea is a good one. I'd like to see a little more deep dive into this, and I know that's going to be a little ask for you, Patricia. But, you know, I, I just, in good conscience right now, I know we just put this five-year of rates going into place, and I know that that was supposed to be way more than we needed. And I'm just a little leery about this at this point, so I would like to see a little more of a deep dive. I think Councilman or Councilwoman Wynn-Penalosa is a great, great idea. Can we get a little bit more information on this, a little more deep dive of what, what we're looking at for cost? And not just that little spreadsheet, but let's break down. I'd also like to know, you know, you, you mentioned the increases on the different platforms. And I, and I don't know this, but I, I want to think that some of those happened prior to our vote of the first raise. So I don't know that, but I'd like to know when those things were implemented. So it could help me make my decision. So I, I agree. I think maybe we should table this for two weeks.
And I, I would agree with that. And I, the reason I brought it up was because, you know, that we just had a three-day weekend, you know, Veterans Day, and we get the agenda, it comes out Thursday or Friday. I think this one made it came out Friday. You know, councils sit with this to review it over the weekend. And, you know, it's a big deal to all our, so we need more than a holiday weekend to look it over, and we need, we need to get the numbers and we need to crunch it. Because if we, if we can do 10 cents and 10 cents for six months, and then six months later come back and do another 10, if that's what it has to be, I'd rather do that than just do and implement 20 right off the bat and hit everybody, you know, January 1, they're going to hit with the water bill that's going to be, well.
It's going up already.
Yeah, no, I know. Well, that's, everything's going up, right. So anyway, thank you for the motion and the second. I appreciate it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue the item. Please call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, that takes us on to public hearings, item 20.
This evening, item 20 is an adoption of an ordinance, urgency interim ordinance entitled, "An Urgency Interim Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, authorizing a 12-month extension of Urgency Ordinance Number 2950, imposing a moratorium on the approval of substance abuse treatment centers pursuant to California Government Code Section 65858." And this, we have staff, oh, city attorney is going to provide the report.
I'll, I'll provide the report, really, really, really quickly. If you recall, in December last year, we adopted a moratorium prohibiting, prohibiting these types of treatment centers from being established because we don't have currently any regulations in our code pertaining to them. And we had made a lot of changes for our code for mixed use or for other state requirements to allow for more housing. And these types of uses meet the definition, our current definition of medical uses, but they're not necessarily medical uses. They're more, you know, drug treatment centers. So we adopted the moratorium. Under state law, we, the moratorium can be in place for no more than two years. So we extended it for one year, and we're at the point where we have, we have surveyed 21 cities with respects to the regulations they may have. We have tour facilities to, to better understand how they operate. And we have discussed security measures and, you know, continued discussions on what best practices are available to then put together a municipal code amendment. But we're not quite ready to come back with an ordinance. We'd like to do a little bit more research on that. And for that reason, we are asking the city council to extend the moratorium for the full two-year that state law allows. And it's not that we're not, we're going to take the full two years, but as soon as we are ready, we can come back with an ordinance to, to address these types of uses. And that's the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and it does need super majority of the council to approve the extension. Thank you.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, just, I would encourage you guys to, you know, do your homework and get it going. I, I have no problem with this extension. I think, you know, it's needed so we can do it properly when we do implement it. There's a lot of good applications for this in Long Beach, LA. Even Santa Ana has some good applications, so I'd recommend touring some of those facilities. But with that being said, I'd make the motion.
It's a public hearing. Yes, a public hearing.
Oh, that's right, it is.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing. I don't have any cards, but is there anyone wishing to speak on item number 20? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Now, would someone like to make a motion?
Okay, now I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Sorry, and who made the second? Thank you. Motion received, seven yes votes.
Commission committee matters, item 21.
Item 21 is receive and file Measure O, Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2023-24. And we have Member Sanders here to provide that report.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, sir.
As a vice chair for the Measure O Committee, I'd like to file the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2023 to 2024. The objective is this, for the city council to receive and file the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report for that fiscal year. The background on this resolution, 9540-19, titled "A Resolution Defining the Composition of the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee." Purpose, terms of office for committee members, the scope of the committee's responsibilities, and other related matters requires a report to be presented by the committee to the city council annually. This annual report is to summarize the committee's activities during the year and communicate the committee's findings in regards to the city's audited financial information and general fund budget, the CIP plan in regards to Measure O revenue received and corresponding appropriation within the reporting period. The attached Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report discusses the following items. The city, the committee's proceedings and activities during fiscal year 2023 to 24 with focuses on audited fiscal year 2022 to 2023, annual financial information, the adopted fiscal years 2023 to '25 by annual budget for the general fund, and fiscal year 2023 to '24, mid-year general fund financial performance. The committee's findings and recommendations. The committee concluded that the audited fiscal year 2022 to '23 financial information reflected the appropriate collection and use of the Measure O public safety and vital city services tax during the year, and the city's adopted fiscal year 2023 to '25 by annual report for the general fund and the five-year capital improvement plan protected and maintain the city's core services. There's no financial impact to receive and fi, file the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report, and it is recommended that the city council receive and file the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report for fiscal year 2023 to '24. And we have eight pages of attachments. Thank you. I was thinking that you probably already have, and you really don't need me to read these to you. And we will say that we have had very in-depth conversations with staff about this, and it's been a good committee to be on since its inception, and it's going as I think that the city had planned on when this measure was passed.
That's great.
We appreciate your, your duty there. We really appreciate it, yeah.
Oh, you're quite welcome.
I'll move it.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, items for consideration, we do have several listed, so we'll go on to item number 22.
Item 22 is adoption of a resolution to accept tobacco law enforcement program grant funds and authorization of agreements for implementation of the program. And Ms. Director Nikki Wetzel is here to provide that report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is a request to accept the grant funds from the State Department of Justice for our tobacco, continuation of our local tobacco enforcement program. We were last awarded funds from 2021 to 2024, and we were thrilled to have gotten funding again in the amount of $735,990. And this will help us to enforce flavored tobacco bans and, and ensure that minors aren't being sold tobacco, and in general, make sure our tobacco retailers are operating in compliance with state law. So with that, we do recommend that the city council adopt the resolution that is before you, as well as authorize the city manager to sign various agreements to implement the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Questions, comments, motion? Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Item 23.
Item 23 is receive and file the 2024 Garden Grove Police Department Military Equipment Annual Report, an introduction in first reading of an ordinance entitled "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, Adopting an Updated Garden Grove Police Department Military Equipment Use Policy Pursuant to Government Code 7071," and rescinding ordinance numbers 2944 and 2953. And Chief Alfaro is here to provide the report.
He's going to punt to me, so the city attorney will be providing the report. So before you, this item has come before you a couple of times already because we adopted the policy per state law, and we, over time, have needed to make some revisions to the policy, and thus for we here again. We need to come once a year to present the annual report, which is before you, and that one is just a receiving file. In the report, we basically identify the instances where we used the equipment, and also whether there were any complaints and there were no complaints. And so that's for you to receive and file. In addition, we're asking for you to introduce and send to second reading an ordinance that would amend the policy. And the amendment has three items. Number one, it would authorize a refurbishing of equipment that has been used so that we have a minimum amount of, for example, bullets. Second of all, we're adding aerial or drones to the policy because they're considered military equipment under state law. So even though the drones are not going to be firing any, you know, any bullets or anything like that or exploding, state law still defines them as military use. So the city council approved the purchase of drones, and so they're being added to the policy as part of the equipment that's going to be used. And there's also one unmanned ground vehicle that's going to be added as well. And with that, it is not a public hearing, so the recommendation is for you to receive and file the annual report. And number two, to introduce and read the ordinance, and you're already authorized reading it by title only. I'll be happy to answer any questions and punt to the chief, if I don't know the answer.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the recommended action from the attorney.
Yeah, I'll second it, but I do have a, a que, I, you know, going through that list, there's things that are clearly civilian, you know, like the shotguns. I mean, they're, that's not military. They're, they're, you could go buy them at any, is that for the same reason as the drones are listed, the government declares that that's military or?
Well, you know, we have this discussion, you know, with PD, my office, my partners, and when you look at the definitions of state law adopted, pretty much anything that fires other than a baton is going to be military use because you use guns in war, right? But yes, there's a, there's a gray area as to whether a service weapon, you know, is, is not military use, but, you know, what kind of service weapon? You know, we're talking Magnum 44 versus, you know, Glocks of nine millimeters. So in order to be safe, we just list everything in the policy.
Well, this law's been around for about, what, five years now?
Three years.
Three years, okay. So I think, you know, we can get a general consensus of what other cities are doing, and I don't know if we need to unnecessarily burden the PD with reporting how many shotguns they have and how many, you know, things that are clearly not military.
And if you look at the, if you look at the annual report, we're not going to report how many times a service arm is fired. Only, we're only going to report some of the major equipment when that was used. That's going to be reported.
Sure, sure. All right, well, thank you. And I'll, I'll second it.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Item 24.
Item 24 is introduction in first reading of an ordinance entitled "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, Amending Provisions of Chapter 11.32 of Title 11 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to the removal and Pertaining to the Removal and Replacement of City Trees."
And Councilor Bradegum is going to give the report.
Well, first of all, I like that. I do want to thank you all for tasking me with, uh, getting everyone together. I got staff together, um, we got the people who, um, deal with the actual boots on ground, you know, with the trees, and, and, uh, we've got mid-level staff supervisors, managers, directors, Omar, city manager. We've gotten everybody into this, uh, thing, so, um, I think the main grief that I'm getting from folks was the having to go through this petition process and getting neighbors to sign off, and so the new methodology basically is the city manager has the ability, the discretion to determine whose property is that tree is closest to. So if it's in front of your house, it is your tree, and you can make the request to have the tree removed. Of course, you're going to bear all the costs associated with that. And also, you know, we want to preserve our trees. We don't just want all the trees cut down, so you also need to agree to plant a city-approved tree in its place. Instead of one of these, you know, right now, we've got these big pine trees that are 150, 200-foot tall that are, you know, people want to get rid of, but you got one neighbor next to you who's like, "Oh, I love it, I love it." You know, and then it falls down in a storm, and it crushes somebody's car or their house, and now the city's got to pay damages for all that, so, um, this makes it a lot easier, a little more modern. Instead of, you know, back in the seventies, going around and getting signatures was probably cool, but nowadays, a lot of people don't. Yeah, good luck getting anyone to answer their door at all, right? So, um, that's the main, uh, changes. You still, if the city determines, this is a case by case, or the city still has pure authority to say, "No, we're going to save that tree" for whatever reason, um, you do, as a, a community member, have a right to appeal that decision to the Admin Appeals Commission. Um, if it's two or more trees, the planning commission already deals with that as far as with developments and stuff like that, so if it's, uh, that'll still stay with them, and, uh, those decisions will be final. You can, um, and lastly, the main thing is you can only make this, uh, once you've been denied, you have to wait five years before you can come back and do it again, and request again. Because what happens is people will get the denial, and then, yeah, the next week, they're back in there, and then the next week, they're back in there, and then, you know, so, uh, it creates a burden to staff. So, um, those are the main things, um, that we, that we touched on, so. And I know you all had time to read it and get a good look at it, and I hope I covered everybody's concerns.
There is one more change, and that is we're increasing the penalties from $50 to $250.
Oh, that's true.
The penalty was kind of low, so.
Yeah, it was 1972 penalty, $50. So it's 250, which actually now is doable, and, and, uh, the cost to replant these trees and, and stuff. And that's also the increase in the fine. It used to be a $50 fine if you damaged a tree. Now it, we've raised it to 250, so, since 1972 to 19, or to 2024, it's gone up a little bit, but it's still kind of low in my opinion, but, um, those are the main differences.
Ready? Got a motion?
Yeah, I'll move it.
I'll second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, last item under ordinances presented for a second reading and adoption, number 25.
Second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2958 entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, Adding Chapter 8.96 to Title 8 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code Pertaining to Camping on Public Places and Interfering with Public Access."
Thank you, I'll move it. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Now, that goes to effect January 1st?
It goes in effect 30 days from today.
Oh, even quicker, okay. So the end of December, by Christmas. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
All right.
All right, that takes us on to matters. We have no items listed, but we'll go around the horn, so, George?
Um, you know, I did, I was going to talk about our trip to Seattle, but our mayor, Potem, is going to handle that, so I'll defer that to her. That's all I have.
Birthday boy.
Um, yes, uh, so this is, just to report back to our, um, city, uh, we traveled to Ground Mall, uh, Washington, where we toured Great World Lodge to see their latest innovation, including upgraded room, enhanced restaurant, and newly added, um, dry plate ground. Um, so as council member, public servant, right? Sometime we have to do something that, you just have to do it to serve our city. And in this case, um, that day, you know, we have to take time off from work. We got up early, 6:00 AM, the flight early, and thanks to, um, for that trip, we have council member George and council member, uh, O'Neil Camlader, beside that, um, our city manager Lisa and Ursula, um, came too. So, um, uh, why did we have to go? So sometime we have to make decisions on certain thing, and we need to do our, um, homework. And that part of the reason why we went there, and it was really a quick trip, left 6:00 AM and came back after 10:00 PM. And so, um, we would do whatever it takes for our city. So that's first. Uh, second, just want to say good job to our staff on the jack-o'-lantern. I went there, kid was so happy with, um, getting the candy and have fun, you know, taking picture. But also, I want to say thank to, um, uh, Garden Girl and Bosa Grande Student for volunteering. Um, even the, at that time, the party event already were over, but there was kid that's still having fun with decorating, and they stay there. And at the end, after that, I saw them how they have to do the cleanup, pick up all the trash and everything. It was very impressive just to see that they spend the time, and they stay way after the time that they were supposed to. So good job, and thank you for volunteering. Uh, last but not least, and you already know that we won first place for innovation project, thank you to, um, our council here and staff for your support as always. That's it for me.
I did, I forgot one thing. Um, and, and you forgot to mention Ursula's rain driving skills.
Oh, yeah.
It was pouring rain, and we had to drive from the airport, it was about an hour drive to the lodge, and it was just coming down in buckets. And, uh, Ursula was a pro. I mean, she had that down, every time a big rig passed us, it was.
Thank you.
But I did forget to mention, and I don't know how I forgot, but, um, we dedicated the Strawberry Zest sculpture, uh, last week, and I'm really, really happy that that is finally done. Uh, and, uh, just a shout out to our artist, Jennifer Stewart, and to the council, who's been very, very generous in letting us locate it there in front of the fire station on Valley View, um, just south of Chapman. And, um, and if you have time, go out there, take a look at it. It's kind of, kind of a neat, uh, you know, sculpture, uh, um, you know, five-year effort to raise all the funds and get it, and then, get it made, and then finally donate it, um, to the city. So, uh, I think, uh, everybody should take a look at that and get a look at it. And I know everybody, uh, um, well, with that being said, um, that's all.
Good job, and thank you.
Yes.
I was hoping he'd forget about it and not be able to whip through back, but he did. Okay, so I'm, I'm all about the Strawberry Zest, too. It's a legacy project, and kudos to, uh, George, and, uh, a lot of people worked on it with you, and the artist is, uh, very insightful, and the sculpture, not statue, is very meaningful. Uh, I do recommend, just as George said, uh, everybody just take a quick, uh, exit off the Valley View Freeway, and you'll be there in a minute or two, and beautiful place to take pictures, and small little park around it. And there's no benches, but we don't want people to loiter there. But other than that, uh, it's definitely going to be a tourist attraction, a hotspot. And, um, the hotspot's coming to us, too, so George missed that. We're going to have another version, smaller, here in City Hall. I can't wait. Um, so, but thank you for everyone who donated. I think the website's still up, you can still donate, right?
No more money.
Ah, well, um.
How often do politicians say, "Don't send me money"? No money.
So it's all paid for, which is a really, really good news, and that we can celebrate the holidays with that. That's all I have.
Real quick, before I pass on to Stephanie, since we're on that one, I'd like to say a few words, just kudos to councilmember George Bradegum for championing that project, for being persistent, sticking with it, and seeing it through to a successful completion. Um, and I love, love, love Jennifer Stewart, the artist. Um, she does amazing work, she pours heart and soul into all the pieces that she does, um, and that's not the first one, so she's, she's, uh, hopefully got more to come. Uh, if you want to support a starving artist, go eat at her restaurant, Azteca Mex, Azteca Mexican Restaurant on Main Street, to support Jennifer Stewart. Um, with that, I'll pass it on to Stephanie. Okay, Kim?
Just really quick, the usual. The OCTA streetcar area, again, is riddled with a lot of trash and transit individuals lining up along the wall, um, getting close to the Jeffy Lube. Um, the Garden Grove 22 freeway underpass on Garden Grove Boulevard between Hester and Fairview, um, every night, it seems, the police go out there and try to, you know, shoot people away, but there's 10 people lined up with their bikes, their carts, miscellaneous other trash, I saw milk jugs and a horde of other stuff blocking the path for people to walk after, as soon as it gets dark. Um, and then, per usual, Trask and Harbor, the bane of my existence. Um, just a lot of loitering, those lights, I don't think are on yet. I'll have to check tonight on my way home, um, but people are hoarding underneath there and, um, causing some havoc, so if we can get those areas, um, a little, some more activity from GGPD to just pass by and have presence, I would really appreciate it, thank you.
City manager, Lisa Kim?
No items, mayor, thank you.
General counsel, anything you report out, any need for a closed session?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right, I just want to say happy early birthday to councilmember John O'Neill. And with, right? And with that, we will stand adjourned, so enjoy the rest of your evening, everyone.